January 15th to order. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. A lot of winter issues and today, schools were closed, had some folks in accidents and such, so let's just be thinking about people being safe. We have another, I'm staring at Ms. Gleason, another chance for interesting weather, so let's think about people being safe as we take our moment of silence. Thank you, everyone. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Alderman Jobchin will lead us in that.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Brian, if you'd call the roll, please.
Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
Anne Ambrose.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you. And I'll read quick protocol for tonight's meeting. As we begin the meeting in City Council, again, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing, of course, on our computer or devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please remember you're sharing it with everyone, both viewing and here. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that you reflect the common desire, we all have, to make Davenport a safe, stable, and welcoming community. I'll ask you to silence or turn off your phones, so they don't interfere with anybody discussing. If you have a, we don't have anything on discussion today, but if during the public comment, you want to come up and talk, we're happy to receive your comments. Just understand you have five minutes. We'd love you to tell us your name and address or ward, and we'll be respectful with you if you please be respectful with us. I ask you, everyone, again, and I know you will, accept the rules of courtesy, decorum, and respect. So with that, will an Alderman move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for November 26?
Second.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Will an Alderman move approval to special City Council meeting minutes from December 4th, 2019?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good, that carries. Ms. Spiegel, City Administrator, do you have anything for us?
Just a reminder that immediately after the meeting tonight, we will start with our budget workshops, working on council goal setting, and then Saturday morning at 8:30, we will be back here, where they're permitting, to talk about the operating budget.
Ms. Gleason, you're there. Okay. And now, will, thank you. Alderman or Alderwoman, move approval of the report of the committee hold for January 8th.
Second.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, very good. We have two appointments and three proclamations this evening. We have an appointment to planning and zoning. Stephen Garrington is a new appointment. An affirmative action commission, Michael Guster, is a new appointment. I'll accept a motion and a second. There's a motion and a second, okay, for these two appointments. Any discussion? Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Garrington, and back in the back there, and Mr. Guster for willing to serve your city. Okay, two, sorry, three proclamations. The first one, Alderman, Doorman will read on slavery and human trafficking. Here to accept Maggie Tinsman, Chloe Quinteno, Kelly Danielson, and Pauline Gordon. So Alderman, Doorman.
Thank.
[inaudible]
Okay. So Alderman Doorman will read it, Ms. Tinsman, and then he'll come present.
Thank you. So this topic's one that we might not all know a lot about, but it is something that happens in our community and that we should be aware of, so that being said, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with unalienable right to freedom and added the 13th Amendment to the Constitution, making slavery illegal, and whereas human trafficking is modern-day slavery, claiming millions of victims worldwide, and found in the United States most often in the form of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, and debt bondage, and whereas this horrific crime, which denies human dignity and freedom and fuels organizational, organized crime, exists in every city, and whereas even though the awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstood of, misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators, and whereas the increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help diminish the number of future victims, and whereas fighting human trafficking is a shared responsibility, the efforts by our local community to promote the yearly observance of Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January enacts one of these examples of the continuous commitment in the United States and the state of Iowa to increase awareness of and to actively eradicate human trafficking, and whereas the city of Davenport joins Breaking Trafficking program of Family Resources and their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, and comprehensive services to survivors of human trafficking. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2020 as Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and do urge all citizens to join in this observance dated 15th day of January 2020. So accepting on behalf of Breaking Trafficking, I move to proclamation.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, that's approved.
Since it has been moved and approved now, accepting on behalf of Breaking Trafficking, Maggie Tinsman, Chloe Cantiero, Kelly Danielson, Pauline Gordon, and Diana Tinsman.
I'll tell you how much I greatly appreciate the city of Davenport passing this proclamation that declares January Slavery and Human Trafficking, here, please, I don't, Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. As the initiator of the Iowa law making human trafficking a felony and the current Secretary of Iowa's Network Against Human Trafficking and the founder of Breaking Traffic, which is now connected with Family Resources, we, four of us, at least, thank you for recognizing how important the issue is. It has been, and has been mentioned in the past, trafficking or slavery occurring right here in the Quad Cities is indeed hard to believe, but it is right here in River City. So we need all our citizens to learn about trafficking or slavery, so that we can become part of the solution to this heinous crime. I also, though, would like to thank you all for initiating a local massage parlor ordinance. I believe your Chief of Police, Chief Sikorski, was very much involved with the pushing of that, and I hope that your law enforcement personnel with Chief Sikorski and others will continue to enforce it as well as to look for human trafficking wherever drug raids are initiated, as drugs and human trafficking are closely connected. But this year, I want to just mention one other thing. Our first priority of the Network Against Human Trafficking is to pass the Hotel Motel Training Bill, which will be initiated by Representative Gary Moore and Senator Robbie Smith from Davenport. The bill requires the Department of Public Safety to oversee the administration of the hotel motel training by giving out a state certificate, recognizing that training by the hotels and motels, wherever they get it, from their organizations or from Breaking Traffic, that whatever is done, that this certificate will be prominently displayed in that hotel motel, and this will allow the state and local governments, including you and the school boards and the county, to utilize this establishment for their activities. In other words, no government will utilize the business which has not trained their employees, all their employees, in human trafficking. We would appreciate it if your council would talk to your legislators about the importance of this bill, and I have copies of the bill, along with some of our other priorities that I'd like to give out to you, and you could talk to any of your legislators. We want this very much to be a bipartisan bill, we think it will be, it's just that we'd like local government to be pushing it, as well as the Network Against Human Trafficking. Finally, I'd just like to say it's most important that our Quad Cities be free of an element that destroys basic human rights. Like you, we want our communities to be family-friendly and places of which we are extremely proud, and Davenport is one of them. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If you, do you get a picture?
Oh, yeah. Maybe we should have all of you up here.
More the merrier, doesn't matter to me.
And ladies, if you guys would like to, yes. There you go.
Come.
And Ms. Tinsman, I'll say from the council, we thank you for your leadership on this issue. So. The next proclamation is National Mentoring Month, and Alderman Gripp will lead this proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is my honor to read this proclamation, and it reads, whereas everyone remembers someone special, a neighbor, teacher, relative, or friend, who broadened our horizons and brought purpose to our lives; whereas these special individuals singled us out and volunteered their time to help us become engaged and stay on the right track to success; whereas every adult has something to offer a child, and every child has something to offer to our community; whereas research has shown that children engaged in healthy and safe one-to-one mentoring relationships are more likely to graduate high school, avoid incarcerations, and avoid delinquent behavior; whereas there are a significant number of vulnerable children in our community who need and want a positive role model in their lives; whereas our city embraces the concept of engaging volunteers to mentor children of promise in our community; and now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim January 2020 as National Mentoring Month, and we encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, and religious and educational institutions to support mentoring and give young people in our community the gift of time and friendship through big brothers, big sisters, dated this 15th day of January 2020. I move the proclamation.
Motion and second. There's a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Accepting on behalf of big brothers and big sisters, Zach Solis, the big brother, and?
Javon, if you guys will step up to the front, please.
We have to apologize, school was canceled today, so we left a speech at school. We didn't prepare anything, but on behalf of big brothers, big sisters, we're very happy to accept this, and represent big brothers, big sisters, in behalf of Davenport Fire Department, of which we are part of Bigs in Blue, along with Davenport Police Department, who have several members involved with that, we're glad to be here.
Well, we thank you both for your commitment to making Davenport a great place to live.
Fantastic. Congratulations. Thank you all. Thank you. The next one, Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association. Alderwoman McGinnis will lead that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. This is exciting for me. This is a group of people who have worked very hard as a neighborhood. It's a great old part of our city, and they worked hard to do every step, everything that they needed to do to become a recognized neighborhood, which is a program through the city of Davenport, and if you're interested, there is more information on our website. But special place in my heart for the folks of the Bridge Avenue Historic District, so let me read this. City of Davenport, Iowa, proclamation, whereas the Davenport 2025 Comprehensive Plan identifies neighborhoods as the basic building blocks of the city, and whereas the Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association has defined themselves as the area of north, east, 10th Street, east to the east, College Avenue, to the South River Drive, to the West Oneida Avenue in Davenport, Iowa, and whereas the Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association has established bylaws in accordance with the city's neighborhood recognition policy, and whereas the Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association has provided to the city and will maintain accurate contact information for the leadership of their organization, and whereas the Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association will schedule and publicize regular public meetings to encourage the involvement of their neighbors, and whereas the Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association has shown the desire and capacity to partner with the city to improve the quality of life within the neighborhood and Davenport. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of the city of Davenport, Iowa, encourage all citizens to participate in their neighborhood associations, and on January 15th, 2020, do proudly hereby proclaim Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association a recognized neighborhood. And now, meeting me at the podium will be Juliana Buckaloo, who led this effort, Lamar Buckaloo, and I believe there are children, Carol Dowell, John Higgins, Scott Holgerson, and Mike Miller.
Marion, could you move it? Move the, or I'll move it. Move the proclamation, is there, and there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved.
Juliana?
Yeah.
Juliana?
Yeah.
So here we go.
Two rows might be better.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Why you switch down?
There you are.
Did you hear?
I can get all of you right there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did I just say something?
Guilty.
I wish to quickly thank the mayor and the council for their recognition of the Bridge Avenue Historic District Neighborhood Association. In particular, we wish to thank Alderman McGinnis and former Alderman Rita Rossin for their help and support in organizing this. We feel like the preservation and integrity of these historic residential neighborhoods of our city are key to the future of our city. We appreciate the city recognizing the nature of these historic homes in this U.S. Historic District that has been on the National Register of Historic Places since 1983. Through a raised awareness and city support, we can work together to make our neighborhood a place where people want to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, also. There are no items, I'm sorry, no presentations this evening, and next is petitions and communications from members and myself, and E. Alderman. Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind everybody that the rescheduled third ward meeting will be at 2:00 on Saturday at Cedar Memorial Christian Church on Cedar Street. This was scheduled for last week, but had to be postponed because of the weather. Hopefully, it will go, I think it will go anyway. In any case, we'll be talking about upcoming goals. We'll also be talking a little bit about the newly announced Good Neighbor Project coming out of the city of Davenport, working with the police department and with neighborhoods, so anyone's certainly welcome to join us. Also wanted to say, we had a report, and we had a wonderful, wonderful weekend at Bald Eagle Days with promoting our upcoming census. We took one of our giant 16-foot banners, and we invited people to sign their names because they count, which our banner says, "We Count," and it is now full, so we'll be bringing out other banners over the next few weeks, and we'll be signing those all around, we'll probably have one here at City Hall 190, if that's okay. But we really want people to, you know, really become aware of the census coming up in March, and April 1st is census day, so you'll hear me talking about this again, but a great event. Many thanks to all the volunteers who helped us through the weekend.
Thank you. Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have two announcements. The first is that this weekend, Saturday, is the Istravaganza 2020. It is happening at the Freight House from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This is a free event. It has become a fixture of wintertime in Davenport. Go down and see the ice sculptures, and the theme this year is aliens. Again, it's a free event. Part of that is, you know, the city of Davenport, the city council sponsored it with beautification dollars. I thank my colleagues for continuing to do that. As I talked about last week, we won an award this winter for being a river town, a holiday town, and this is one of the events that goes towards making Davenport a great place to live, even when it's only 10 degrees outside, so. Then there is a component to the Istravaganza, the after-party, where the daytime is more family-friendly. At night, there is a ticketed event, there's live music. In past years, there's been fire throwers, and it's a lot of fun if you can, if you have a warm hat and warm gloves, show up in the evening time. And then on a sadder note, I would like to make a comment that last week, the city of Davenport and the Davenport Public Library lost a very special person. Pat Till had worked in customer service for 41 years at the public library, and specifically, she was a clerk in the children's department. Now, if you're, you are an 80s or 90s baby, like myself, in the summer, we went down to the Davenport Public Library, the main, the Main Street branch, and she was always there, and it was always fun for me to go see her, because she was my Sunday school teacher. But even the folks who didn't have her as a Sunday school teacher loved to go see Ms. Pat at the library, because she always had a smile, she loved children, and she was a fixture there, and I was happy to see a lot of people sharing her memory on Facebook this week, having that same memory that I had. She led a life of service, and she made our community better, she made the Davenport Public Library very, very better, and we'll miss her. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Jobchin.
Just a brief announcement that we'll be conducting the first ward meeting for the sixth ward of 2020, Tuesday, February 11th, 6:30, at McKinley Elementary School. All in the sixth ward, and within the city, you're welcome to come, and agenda will be posted later on.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderwoman Dickman.
Another ward meeting announcement, February 6th at 6:00 p.m. will be a second ward meeting at Truman Elementary. Our council secretary, Tiffany Thorne Dyke, will be coming and discussing and doing a presentation about all of the different tools that are available to help citizens interact with their city, so it'll be a very informative evening, and everyone is welcome to join. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Davenport owns, Davenport's own Roger Craig, played football at Davenport Central, had a lot of great years with the San Francisco 49ers. He was a finalist for the Pro Football Hall of Fame, and today, they snubbed him. He was not admitted into the Pro Football Hall of Fame, so this is my own personal call to action, that if we all just send him some better juju, we're going to get him across the goal line into the end zone next year, and then we'll be able to say Davenport's own Hall of Famer, Roger Craig. So that's just my personal plea to you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. I just want to reemphasize the Good Neighbor Program that Ms. McGinnis talked about. Is there, is there another? I'll get you, sorry, I didn't see it, so you'll just have to yell at me sometimes. The police and the collaboration, the police department and the Community Planning Economic Development Department and neighborhoods, and we had folks, this was modeled off, modeled off of Madison, Wisconsin's Good Neighbor Program, and they came in brief, so there was a great presentation today, and it's kind of an enhanced and more friendly neighborhood watch type of thing, but it's a great collaboration, and kudos to the staff, we're going out, outside the box, looking for things that we can do to enhance public safety, enhance collaboration between police and neighborhoods, and this will be a great program, so I just wanted to emphasize this. And Alderwoman Lee, do you have a thing? Yes.
I'd also like to say that my second ward, eighth ward, ward meeting is going to be held on February 3rd. Mine are being held every, the first Monday of every month. They will always be at the Eastern Library, except for February and April, which will be at KSI. So I've tried to make it as consistent as I can, so people know where to go, and it's always the first Monday. The last one, I want to encourage you to go to Maria's, because Tiffany Thorne Dyke gave the talk about the tools for communicating with the city and the website, and it is, she did a great job, as well as you have wonderful tools on the city website, it's amazing what's on there. So even if you're not in Maria's ward, I would encourage you to go. The one on February 3rd is going to be Amy Kay from Public Works, who is the Storm Water Manager, as well as the Partnerships of the Scott County Watersheds, and they're going to be talking about the amazing things they're doing to try to get the water into the ground and keep our clean water, rather than running off into the river. It'll be a very good talk, and I encourage you to come on February 3rd at 6:30 at KSI.
Thank you. Anyone else that I don't see, yell at me, wave at me. Okay, thank you. Next item is, we have nothing on the discussion and agenda, so is, I'll entertain a motion for approval of all items on the consent.
Motion.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please, Brian. Yes.
Doorman.
I'm going to abstain from number 10, but yes to all other items.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Lee.
I'm going to abstain from number 19, but yes on all other items.
Gripp.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Peacock.
Yes.
Dickman.
Yes.
Jobchin.
Yes.
And Ambrose. 10 yeses, Your Honor, accept as noted during the roll call.
Thank you very much, Brian. Are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? I'm seeing none, okay. Is there any public with business tonight? If you do, please come up, state your name, ward, or address, and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Mayor? Members of the council? I'm Lee Yaston, I live in the fifth ward, I'm looking forward to getting acquainted with you, Councilmember Doorman. I was appointed to Davenport Civil Rights Commission last December by Mayor Klipch, and confirmed by the council at that time. I want to reassure you, if you're feeling a little nervous, I'm not addressing any issues related to the Civil Rights Commission with my talk tonight. However, the subject of what I'm going to speak on is related to civil rights. I've in recent months been doing some training sponsored by Quad City Interfaith, that they do in cooperation with the dioceses, Catholic dioceses, a program called the Modern Institute. And in our discussions there, after the incidents that occurred where the teen political group had the white nationalists come and speak, and there was some leafleting with some hate literature that was scattered around in the Quad Cities, there was some discussion about what can be done, and I'm very gratified that a number of civic leaders spoke quite strongly in opposition to the hate speech or hate literature, but in the discussions we've had in my particular group, the Modern Institute, we also thought that there needs to be a more sustained approach going on in the community, both among government leaders and other civic institutions. So I'm really here to encourage members of the council and members of the city administration to think proactively out of the box about how the city can support the inclusion of all members in our community in the city's common life. Yes, Davenport needs a Civil Rights Commission, but there's so much more that could be done as we think about it. I think there's a sustained moral commitment that can be made that would affect the hiring, the recruitment of businesses, the city's interaction with public schools, zoning, law enforcement, justice administration, and so on. These are not an accusation of what's been done. I know there's a lot of people working in good faith to make this community stronger and to avoid or get rid of those kinds of conflicts that have occurred with the kinds of incidents I mentioned, but I believe that people who are active in the social justice area in this community would really like to see sustained commitment and some more creative thinking about how to use city resources. creative thinking about how to use city resources in doing so. And so I'm really here to encourage you to do that tonight and to consider how that might happen, and to reach out to people who are involved in civil rights activities for ideas on how that might happen. Thank you very much for your time. It's a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskin. Anyone else? Hearing and seeing no one, certainly we support what you're saying. Are there any other reports, Ms. Spiegel? So just before I ask for a motion to adjourn, just so everybody knows, we're going to move down to the table here. I reserve my seat, you can sit where you want, and we're going to have our first work session on budget, actually on goals and things like that. So is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned. We'll take about a five-minute break to transition here. I know we got to get some food in, so.